Good evening, everybody. And welcome to a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceall to be held today, Tuesday, February 19th. The time is 7:00 PM. May I have a real call, please?
Mary Moore.
Present.
Robert Villarreal.
Present.
Here.
Sonia Hernandez.
Here.
Brede Ewing.
Here.
Julia Hernandez.
Present.
Dan Verso.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum, so let us stand for our invocation. And as well as our pledge of allegiance.
Lord, thank you tonight for bringing us here, and I just pray that you be with us and help us to make decisions based on your will, Lord, and just keep us all safe as we go through our daily lives, Lord, and keep us on your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, A. Action to consent agenda. Discussion of possible action regarding approval of minutes for February 12th, 2019. This is an action item, so we need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Let's see. Minute or two to look over the minutes. A few seconds. Hmm. Any further discussion on questions about the minutes for February 12th? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes for February 12th.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries on and it's must leave.
I'll abstain since I want to.
Item five, new business. A. Discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number 2019-02-01, amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018. Action item. Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All in favor? Discussion proceed.
Madam Mayor, Council, before you, is ordinance 2019-02-01, which is a proposed budget amendment. Now, this proposed budget amendment is in response to the action that the council took at the last meeting, which was to not appeal the decision in the Tobias lawsuit and to pay the judge on page two, which is the page behind the ordinance. It outlines the mechanism that we put together for paying it based on what we had talked about last time. So, the auditor in our previous meeting gave us a draft audit report, and we pushed him to get those draft numbers to us for that last meeting, so we would have those numbers for the discussion to look at this. So, based on what he gave us last time, the numbers that they had at that time was that the actual reserves or fund balances at the end of the fiscal year last year was about one, it was one million, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. So, that was the money that was left in the general fund at the end of the year after we paid all the bills for last fiscal year. Now, of course, we talked about this before, and a reminder, we had the remainder of the insurance money was still in that fund as well. There was six hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and twelve cents left out of that one point two million that was insurance money. And then, the council had previously taken action on a budget amendment, excuse me, to transfer four hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents of the remaining reserves into the general fund for this year for expenditure as a prepayment for the STEC funds that we'll receive in August. And then, that was to be replaced in August with the STEC funds. So, with those two things taken out of the fund balance that we have from last year, that left a reserve of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. So, the first item on this is to increase the budget by that one hundred and thirty-six dollars, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, which is the remainder of the reserves that we had left over from last year, to start coming up with the one hundred ninety-three thousand that we needed to pay the judgment. As we discussed at the last meeting, that is all the extra money, basically, that's sitting around. So, the only other thing we could do after that was to cut other things that we had already done with the STEC money, or that we had planned to do with the STEC money, to fund the rest of that balance. And so, that would be, in the end of the discussion with the council, we wanted to cut as little as possible out of streets and roadways, because the majority of that money went to streets and roadways. So, we were going to have to cut a position. So, we talked about the three positions. One of the three positions that was approved out of the STEC money was a CDL driver to drive the street sweeper, and we can't really cut that, because the street sweeper sits for a year. The other one was a code enforcement officer, and the other was the extra police officer. So, the only one that didn't really get into the streets and roadways any bigger was to cut the extra police officer. So, we cut that position out of there, which decreased, which added another forty-one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars to the one thirty-six, three eighty, and that left a balance of about sixteen thousand to be able to pay off the judgment, so we reduced streets and roadways out of the STEC money by sixteen thousand. And that's all the numbers that are in there. So, that would give us the total amount that we need to pay off the judgment. As we talked about last time, there's post-judgment interest that's being added to each day until we get it paid off, so it's going to vary a little bit. As you notice, we're transferring all of this into the administration budget, into a new line item that we created, which is the 2013 lawsuit judgment. The reason that we did that is twofold. One, to very clearly line out in the budget that that money was to pay for a lawsuit that was from 2013, not from now. And two, is because if that post-judgment adds up to be twenty, thirty, forty dollars, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever above what we've got in here, we can just do a line item transfer, go and get it paid off. That way, we don't have to come back to the council again with anything else to be able to get the check ready. We have reached out to the attorney for Mr. Tobias and Mr. Tobias to get the W9s, so that's done. So, if you guys approve this tonight, theoretically, we should be able to get this paid in the morning, and the interest will stop. I don't know. So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer your questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
You have a question?
Yes. So, in the police department, we currently have the animal control officer.
Correct.
And we're going to have the compliance officer.
The code enforcement officer was set up to go under planning and zoning. It wasn't set up, it wasn't paid to go under, under the police department. With the original budget amendment, if you guys did, you put it in planning and zoning because of cost of.
Okay, so we're going to have those two positions.
Those two, yeah. That way, no. This police position that was in here was the actual that you added with the STEC money, so it's one that's never been filled.
Okay.
And it doesn't change what's there right now at all. But it was still, so we would still get the CDL driver for the sweeper, and we would still get the code enforcement officer in planning and zoning to start doing the other stuff.
And in cutting this position, how does that affect our department?
Well, it doesn't change anything. What's happening right now, they have the exact same that they have right now.
Well, I understand that, but is there still a need for one after that?
There's a need, no. There's a need for employees in every department, sure. But, we've got to pay somewhere. It's either that or it's lay off another employee someplace else, or park the street sweeper for a year, or don't do code enforcement, or, I mean, it's, you know, it's, got to go from somewhere.
Yes, Governor.
The animal control officer, can he do code enforcement as well, Peter? To where we can get the extra officer instead, instead of doing away with the code enforcement, I mean, to where the animal control officer do the work with the code enforcement? Because we don't have a code enforcement right now, right?
Well, the animal control officer was originally set up with the animal control and code enforcement. And then, we had also put a second one in the budget that year, because we tried to get a grant, so we could get a second. And that was through the COPS grant program, correct? That was the one year that, you know, normally, the COPS grant, it's the smaller departments that get the money. That year, San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, and Arlington, I think it was, got all of them. They got all the positions to get out of the COPS grant that year. So, we didn't get that one funded that year, but we had originally gotten two of them in there, but having one of them grant funded. We just didn't get the money for the grant funding.
I have a question. My question is, okay, how much was the pilot program for STEC? Was it a four hundred and change?
Four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, one sixteen, twenty-six.
Okay, can you show me that on this form?
It's not completely, no, it wouldn't be on this, because this is just what we're moving around. So, the 418, one six twenty-six was done in ordinance 2018, twelve oh three. That was when you guys did it.
So, how much of it has been allocated to other departments of the four hundred?
Okay, so the 418, one sixteen, twenty-six, you approved a position in streets, which was the CDL driver, and that was, that came out, that cost us thirty-one thousand dollars. You approved the payment for the maintainer, which was fifty thousand. You approved two hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents for roads. And then, you approved the police officer position, which was almost forty-two thousand, and the code enforcement, which was thirty-five.
And how much is the total?
Four hundred and eighty-six thousand, one sixteen, twenty-six. Every penny.
Every penny.
Every penny.
So, I thought we had to agree to set aside extra money dollars for a ready date, like half of it. That's what my.
Well, we had, until this happened, we had about six hundred thousand in reserves. We borrowed, remember, basically, when we did the second, we borrowed from reserves, and we got to payment, we're going to put it back.
Right.
And so, we're just getting the money earlier in the year, so we could actually use it, because the payment's not going to come until August 15th. So, it will be in this fiscal year, but it would be right at the end of the fiscal year. We've got, you know, we've got a whole year where we could be doing this, and what we decided to do was to borrow, basically borrow for ourselves. Borrow from reserves now, so we could use it now, and go and get the position, do the work on the roads, do the things we need to do. Then, when that payment went in, we put it back, and so, we would still have it in there. And we do have a little bit extra in there that we weren't touching, that we still have in case we have an emergency or something. That's the one hundred and thirteen thousand we're talking about now.
Any questions? If not, we need to entertain a motion to address ordinance number 2019-02-01. Any motion?
Do you understand it?
Well, then, you should work to discuss and ask questions. You have a question?
Well, the guidance got to come from somewhere. So, I understand it comes from things we already had hoped we'd accomplish with that money. So, you know, we agreed to pay it, so we need to pay it off. Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the requested fund transfer, ordinance number 2019-02-01.
Second.
All in favor? I show of hands. Unanimous. I B. Discussion of possible action regarding enhanced plus membership option to be added to approved tourism and business development membership fees. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, in our previous meeting, the council established a base membership for membership for our Tourism and Business Development Center, and Cleo talked to you a little bit about that. She took that base membership back to her board, the board that you guys appointed, the Tourism and Business Development Board, and they threw up some additional things they would like to see in what's called an enhanced membership. Cleo, talk to you about that real quick.
Okay. The board has already approved incentives, but exactly what those incentives would be if they had discounts or something is what we went over about a month or so ago. The board did approve those, it just re-press your memory, the incentives. I don't know if everyone has a copy of this.
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, at the top, you'll see those that were already approved, and part of that was half off a meeting room, hour, and a rental rate. That's included if you're a business member, you get these things and discounts on computer usage and making copies at Civic Center, or not Civic Center, Tourism Center. And then, there's what we're adding, this is a hundred dollar fee to add enhanced plus membership. We purchase software for business memberships, so that it'll automatically populate a directory as people sign in, where they can go in and add their information. They'll also have access to different things with this plus enhanced membership, which would mean they would get an enhanced listing, allow them to put on their logo, add a link, so it'll show a video for a YouTube video. They can also have access to what's called hot deals and market space listings. So, if you're a business that wants to have a sale, you can put that on there as a hot deal. All this has to go through the tourism or the business director to go ahead and approve, and then, that would be on the website. All this is under the Tourism Business Development page, so people can go there, register, become a member. And so, people say, "Well, I want to become a member. What do I get for my membership?" Well, here's the base rates, which are really affordable. The original fee, I think, starts at twenty-five dollars for a nonprofit individual, and it goes on up to like a hundred if you're a large business. The fee's fairly moderate. And then, we wanted to add this enhanced membership. It would include one week advertising on the Civic Marquee, twice a year, the logo cycling on the bottom of the tourism homepage. So, let's say, Galen, you wanted to get that enhanced thing, you would have your logo just at the bottom, you see a little recycling of whoever else is doing it. You get access to the hot deals, listing, market space listing. That could be a general, those two things could be a general for all memberships to get, or it can just be specific to the enhanced. And then, we wanted to eventually offer a directory, a printed directory, and add space in the directory, and so, you're an enhanced business member, then you would get a discount on that. I put twenty-five percent discount. So, the board went ahead and looked at these and reviewed the prices, changed them a little bit, and this is what I'm bringing to you today. There's additional recommendations. Our hotels, it would be nice, a lot of cities automatically list hotels available for lodging, so that people who want to come visit or have business to do, they go, go to the website, see what's available. I'd like to see if we can get approved to offer full membership to hotels that are in good standing, that are paying their taxes and so forth, that we go ahead and give them a listing automatically and start generating that. And they'll also give the examples, whether businesses go, "Oh, look at the hotels, do we do that with our business?" So, if you approve that, I have to go ahead and meet the hotels, get their permission, and then, just put them on the site, so they'll have a place of the hotels in the area. And then, there's a courtesy fee we wanted to add to the base membership. One of the things we realized as we were setting this up is there's a cost, obviously, if you pay online to process, the credit card processing fee. Utility online payment for the city now charges two seventy-five, which is the fee that the board recommended. We go ahead and see if we can get approved to add to the base membership. So, if it's twenty-five, it'll be twenty-five plus two dollars and seventy-five cents for the courtesy processing fee. Any questions?
I have a question. How's the membership at this point? How many have signed up for the membership?
There's no membership. I have applications available, but until I have the final approval, very few people know about it. A few people have asked if they can become members. This has hit at the same time that we're taking business licenses. So, in order to be a business member, if you have a business operating within the city limits, you have to have the business license. That qualifies you to become a member of the Tourism Business Development Center.
That's a process.
So, I was waiting for that to kind of sink in, and that's just starting, and it's, I didn't want to start asking businesses, "Okay, now, pay us to become a member." I want that to happen. I want to go after nonprofits first. Different schools, maybe, school district, I don't know if they want to become a member. But it's just a twenty-five dollar fee for individuals and nonprofits. And then, I want to start talking to all the businesses and letting them know that in order to qualify, you have to have a business license if you're here in the city. And then, I'm going to also, my first thing is nonprofits, outside businesses that you work with, like Republic, any of these companies that do business with us on a regular basis, but they're outside the city limits, they don't have to have a business license to do business with us. And then, I'll slowly try to convince the businesses that have to have a business license that they can come on board too. But I mean, start to generate some going. So, we have no business members, to answer your question, at the moment. We have at least a dozen that I've talked to throughout the year and a half, once this has been discussed in the year, and they've been asking when you're going to be the membership. So, I know that once I put this online, and it's really effective going, and I start promoting it, we'll put it out on social media as well. I'll ask the paper to do a write-up. Once the word goes out, I anticipate within the first month to have maybe a dozen come on board. It's not going to be right away. It's probably going to be a slow process. They have to see it working. The most common comment I get back is, "The previous Chamber of Commerce, they didn't do anything anyway. How are you going to be different?" And this is how we're going to be different, because it shows you what you get, and that's going to be on the site. It explains, this is what you get for your membership.
I have a question. Going back to the business license, is that anybody has a brick and mortar business, or what is that until, is that anybody registered with the comptroller's office? Or, I'm a little confused, because I've had a lot of mom and pops have asked me, they don't have brick and mortar, they're contractors, and they're not sure if they need a license or not, and I'm not very well versed on that, you know, and I just needed to know exactly where we stand on that.
You know, I think the discussion we had in the council meeting about that is, if they're providing a service or selling a service or a product inside the city limits, where they should be charging the city tax, where they're required to charge sales tax, then they should be applying for a business license. So, I know, we've got a bunch of them out there that, you know, "Well, I don't, you know, I don't have brick and mortar, I don't have..." But if you're selling a service out of your home, and you're making money on it, you're required to pay business or sales tax on that, then yeah, you should have, you need to have a business license.
So, contractors, building contractors, painters?
Sure. Drive home. Yeah, if they're selling their services inside the city limits, yes. Anybody selling their services inside the city limits. And I know we've got a bunch of those that are probably selling their services and not paying taxes. That doesn't mean they're, you know, they're not. And that, you know, that's one of the other things, is we get this stuff built up, where we can have one, two, or three, or whatever, code enforcement officers out there seeing people doing that painting, you know, seeing the contractors building that garage, whatever, and go up and check, "Hey, let me see your business license, let me see your tax ID number." I mean, that's how we start, how we get to the point where we keep track of that.
So, currently, we would have to go into the comptroller's office and get a list of all, the listings in Pierceall? Is that what, would it affect the way to do it at this point?
Yeah, that's one way to start. You know, we've advertised, you know, word of mouth, social media, we've got the business license out there, we've got people coming in to get your business license. You know, there's lots of questions about it, obviously. There's been a lot of questions about it. And so, you know, we're starting to, you know, there's a lot to process, the ones that we've got in. Once we get those in, then we're going to go to that comptroller's list and start going down that list and call people and say, "Okay, you're responsible for coming in and getting one." You know, you're, if, you know, get the part where we can have that code enforcement officer, and he's got that list, and everybody having come in and got one, and goes and starts knocking on those doors and saying, "Hey, you're required to come in and get one, you need to go get one."
And to add to that, from Josie, the finance director, I got that list of a hundred and fifty give or take businesses within the city that are supposedly paying, or they are paying taxes, that's why they're on that list. So, we were going to do a courtesy letter to each, reminding them that there's this business license, and get that out there, so that they don't have a reason to say, "Well, I never heard about it, I didn't know about it." So, we were going to do a direct mail.
It's taking a little bit of time with business license, because of the majority of our businesses, by the codes, every two years, they're supposed to have occupancy done in their building. None of them have. And so, they're coming in, some of them are coming in, Mr. Parsons has had one in twenty years, twenty-five years, something like that with the building. And so, every time we get one in, we've got to make sure that the CMO gets done, we've got to make sure all those things get done, so it's not just them coming in the door, having this application, and walking out the door with their license. It's taking a little bit of time to get them done and get them right.
I do know when you apply, like, for an LLC or an organization like that, a formation, a business formation, I know immediately, the comptroller issues a tax ID number, you know, so, I mean.
So, it's getting the list from the comptroller, those people that are paying taxes is one thing, getting the list of addresses in Pierceall that have a tax ID number, that's another. And so, we're going to have to get both those lists and work on both of those, because you do, you have a lot of, you know, you'll have, people have a tax ID number with an address here in town that are paying taxes.
Exactly.
And so, we're going to have to, we're going to have to follow both lists. And that's a very good point. Both lists have to be followed, to make sure we get everybody.
And you think it would be kind of beneficial, maybe, we put some kind of write-up in the paper or something about, you know, who's who, you know?
Yeah.
You know, because, you know, like I said, I wasn't, I mean, I wasn't well versed on that either. I just thought that people that had brick and mortar, you know, I mean, that's basically who I thought, you know?
Well, you know, I've had questions, some people, you know, brick and mortar, but they have three different tax ID numbers, they have three different businesses, are the same. Does each one have to have a license or have? You know, we have the same thing. We have people that have multiple businesses, but they run them out of one office. So, we've got all kinds of different stuff, something like that, that we didn't really, you know, we got the basics there for the business license program, but we didn't really get down in the weeds a lot of ways on that. So, as always, if you're, if you're, if you're responsible for collecting sales taxes on a seller, or on a product or service you're providing inside the city limits, then yes. So, but the article, I think we probably do need to do something in the paper that really expands, and I'll talk to Brian about that, and see if we can get something in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, also those businesses that are allowing vendors to, I think we did pass through this council.
They're supposed to have an open air. Peter and I just talked about one of those the other day, because I haven't talked to him, because they had a vendor in his parking lot, and it's like, well, you have to have an open air market license to be able to do that.
Wasn't that permit like a thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was a bunch, twelve hundred. I don't remember what we did. We did some big number, yeah.
Madam Mayor, Teague, just real quick, update us on the audit for the hot tax, or we?
No, we're not to that yet. That's going to be next.
Oh, that's, okay. Pardon me. No questions?
So, on this membership, as soon as we do this, we're going to push for a drive membership, right?
Yes. Every event we have, I'll have a table out there to get information out, and take applications for at least, and out applications. We'll put it on social media, it'll be on the website live. I'm going to actually create a Facebook page just for the Tourism and the Business Department, so we can promote businesses, like other chambers will say, "Such and such business, congratulations on your grand opening, and good luck on your sale," whatever they have. We'll just promote our businesses and our local nonprofits, everything, on that page, just specifically under the Tourism Department.
And do you have, like, a network with other cities, other chambers and so forth?
Cattula approached us a while back, when I first got here. I've been waiting for this to come about and get back with them. They've been wanting to partner and do things. Obviously, many of you know that a lot of businesses here are members of Cattula Chamber of Commerce, so we're like sister cities, so to speak. We're going to go to Billy, we're going to go to Divine, we're going to get the local communities and try to pull in some of their members, who, if that business, if the business in those communities come to Pierceall, or have Pierceall going to them, then they should have an opportunity to be a member. No one's excluded. Anybody can become a member. But we do, it has to go through the department for approval. They can go online, they can sign up, but it's got to be approved before there becomes effective for them to launch and start posting anything. Because there are some restrictions that we may want. You know, obviously, we're going to follow whatever the city ordinances are, so, you know, we get a business that's triple X rated or something, that's not going to go. I've gone to several Shaker classes where they say you don't necessarily want every business. There's reasons. We have not put in any guidelines in this breakdown, but maybe we should. But, for the most part, it's general businesses.
I think the charter of mine, some of that.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Well, we, we have, we have, we have, actually, we're in a business ordinance. We have, we have warrants to maintain my, our, we have warrants to use certain businesses, so they would not qualify anyway.
Right.
Now, this year, you think, is it going to be effective beginning, at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year?
It's effective with their, the date they pay.
Oh.
Yeah, and this software tracks it.
No further discussion. You can entertain a motion to address this item, please.
I know that we approved the tourism and business membership proposed, consists...
Second.
All in favor, by show of hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. Awesome. We're moving on to item C, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number 2019-02-02, adopted in 2018, addition of the International Residential Code, International Building Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and International Property Maintenance Code, and amending the Code of Ordinances, providing a serability clause and providing a penalty clause. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Madam Second. All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, I want to talk about this a little bit, but I want to start off, start this off. I said, this is what we talked about, we've been talking about this for a while, getting those updated code, updated codes in place. Um, this gives the basic framework for the outside, outside of, this is the stuff, the, the international approved codes. Um, by law, we're required to update, uh, we're, we're required to have those codes adopted as our codes. And you're not allowed to be more than five years out of date. And I think the current ones we have are 1993. Um, so we're a little bit past the five years. So this will at least get us in line with the, with the law. Especially the stuff that we've been talking about pertaining to property management, which, with the way people take care of their properties. This is a lot, there's a lot more in this than what there is in the 1993 that we have on the books right now. So being able to address, um...
Why can't we...
Yeah, that kind of stuff, being able to address yards, being able to address, um, you know, the way they're taking care of their properties, that, this one has a lot more teeth in it than the 1993 does. So I'll let you go through the three with you, or the, through the four with you real quick. Um, and then we'll ask you a question, yeah.
Well, um, just like Mr. Jackson said, Madam Mayor, council members, the, um, this is something I've been waiting for since I started work, a year ago now. It's actually a year, like today, or last week, that I started work, that I addressed the council. Um, one of the things I wanted to achieve is to achieve a clean Pierceall. Even before we start getting money to finish the comprehensive plan. Because it's not going to take anything but other than people cleaning their streets and cleaning their yards. It will lift the city up a little. But I couldn't do anything because I didn't really have much of a legal backing. This is going to give me and the department and the city a legal backing to do that. And with the incoming code enforcement officer, this is actually what he or she needs to do his work. Now, the international, there are two bits to this clause. The international codes, uh, which is like the IBC, International Building Code, the IRC, International Residential Code, the IECC, International Energy Conservation Code, and then the IPNC, which is the one Mr. Jackson stressed, the International Property Maintenance Codes. All those four codes is on one side, then amending the Code of Ordinances. The Code of Ordinances is one that we did collate last year about now. You know, the green book, Mr. Jackson brought about five or so copies. Now, those Code of Ordinances, they are in dire need of review. Mr. Jackson says they're a little bit out of date, but 1993 is so out of date. Uh, but it's only one chapter for now, uh, that we have done a review on, chapter 32, which is on nuisance, which also goes, goes towards the cleanliness I'm talking about. That chapter, if you read the chapter, it's everything about nuisance, it's everything about weedy lots, junk vehicles, everything you don't need to see in the city. And that is why I needed to get that amended, so it would drive home the point, and then I can do my work effectively. So that's the code. If you need some more, uh, exposé into the individual international codes, I can give a summary, but, um, it's, I mean, I have them, but if it's something you need, you let me know.
I think the reason we didn't include the four over your packets because it would have been about them days old. I mean, it's, it's wiring and electrical maintenance, and I mean, it's all those things that the contractors were supposed to use and everything else. So I didn't really want to bore you with 3,000 pages of reading about codes.
And how, how have you determined the, to the fees and the charges and, um, because it's part of the ordinance as well? So have you, have you already established a schedule on the fees and the charges and...
For fees for which, what are, what type of fees?
You're talking about if somebody comes in and files something?
Right.
It doesn't change any of that. The, the current fees and stuff that we have would stay where they are.
No, for, I, I'm talking about if you're, if you're against this...
Only violation fees?
A violation, exactly.
It's with the court, the court.
It's, it's not on here. It, it just says that there's a fee, but, you know, has that already been predetermined? Or is that a set, set fee or to be determined? I mean, there's nothing on here.
Says $500, is that...
Yeah.
That's typically.
Section 500.
Bloodline.
What you have in your Code of Ordinances is what most cities have, and that is, you have a general penalty clause that is going to allow you to penalize within, uh, within the scope that the law allows. In most cases, it's going to be, and unit code actually recommends up to $500 per violation. Now, you can go up to 2,000 for a violation that affects the general health, welfare, and health and safety of the community. But those are typically in those situations. So you will have on the books, unless you decide to handle it separately down the road, you'll have a penalty provision that applies to any ordinance violations that allows you to, to assess a penalty for up to $500 plus court costs.
I, I think what concerns me is the habitual, you know, the habitual that, you know, "I'm not going to do it." I mean, you know, you know, that, I think that's what really concerns me, is just somebody habitually...
Well, and I think with, with the update, you know, part of what we talked about, and we talked about this, I've probably talked about this individually mostly, the lack of teeth, part of the reason we have, we're lacking those teeth is because it was 1993 code, and we hadn't, if we'd have taken somebody in court, not with that, we were out of clients to start with. You know, this gets everything up to date. Um, this has a lot more teeth than the 1993 had as well. I mean, there's, there's quite a bit more in here. Uh, and then that habitual one, you know, now that everything's in place, that habitual one, now you start, you know, leans against property, those kind of things, you start doing those kind of things. And have something to make them actually start doing something. So this gets, this gets us to the place where we can start doing that. And then, if any other fees, you know, when talks fees and charges, we have fees for a CMO, we have fees, you know, those things, those all stay the same. No, we're not changing any of that stuff. Yeah, but I think we will.
That answered my question, but it's not specifically spelled out in there. So you send a letter, and I mean, is the protocol going to be, you know, "Dear sir, fix this problem," or we're going to assess the fee? Or it's like, do you have, do you have a cure period? Is that spelled out individually in each one of the codes?
Those letters are designed that, what we're talking about.
So you're going to get a chance...
The specification, they, they give you the, they tell you the definition of apply.
Okay. Which, which is good and fair, but then Plan B, I'm going to agree with Robert, getting these folks to clean up. My question is, if they don't, then it doesn't list in here that, you know, we get the right to a judgment and thereby attach the, the lien to the property, so that would be...
And when you're talking about the IBC or the IRC, you're talking about building standards, internationally recognized building standards. So, you know, we don't talk about the nuisance ordinances in conjunction with building standards. So we're talking about international building codes for residential purposes, commercial purposes, and other ones. So those aren't going to be nuisance related, those are going to provide your building standards. So that's what these codes essentially are going to do. What Ute was talking about was in addition to that, you know, he's talking about your ordinances that affect everything else from junk vehicles to dilapidated buildings to weedy lots, et cetera. That's, that's a different set of ordinances and different set of, of rules and penalties.
So that, so that's not addressed in these?
That's next, yeah.
Right, right.
That would be through a co-compliance.
Yeah, and that, that's next. You got, you have to get the codes up to date before you can update those ordinances, because all ordinances kind of tie back to these.
Okay, so that'll be at the next lien?
Especially, especially that final one, the international property maintenance code.
The nuisance one is the code of, you know, the way it's wired, amending the Code of Ordinances.
Okay. Okay, so, so these are just building standards, not the nuisance as...
We're going to bring, we'll bring, we'll bring an updated nuisance one too.
However, we need to establish these first before we...
Correct.
Yes, sir.
If these are international codes, and we're supposed to vote on it, how do we know what's in it?
How do we?
How, how do we know the specifics of it? Because if we're going to vote on these, and people, the community's going to hold us to it, how do we know what we're getting into here?
Well, there's, it's, it's like...
Okay, okay, okay. Let me, let me just give you a summary, because that's why I said if you need a summary, I can give you. Of all the code.
We have to really understand what we're getting into.
How long is your summary?
No, it's just one page.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I thought you was getting ready to read 3,000 pages.
I already did, I already did some, like, it's basically on public health and...
Okay, it's okay, but...
So, International Residential Code, the code was created to serve as a complete comprehensive code regulating the construction of single-family houses, two-family houses, like duplexes, as well as building consisting of three or more townhouse units. The IRC, which is International Residential Code, covers all components of a house, including structural components, fireplaces, chimneys, thermal installations, mechanical, fuel, gas systems, plumbing systems, and electrical systems. International Building Code, on the other hand, is a code that provides minimum requirements to safeguard the public health, safety, and general welfare of occupants of new and existing buildings and structure. The IBC addresses structural strength, means of egress, sanitation, adequate lighting, ventilation, accessibility, energy conservation, and life safety in regards to new and existing building facilities and systems. Now, the Energy Conservation Code is basically a model code adopted by main states and governments for the establishment of minimum design and construction requirements for energy efficiency. And then the Property Maintenance Code is intended to establish provisions that adequately protect public health, safety, and welfare that do not unnecessarily increase construction costs, that do not restrict the use of new materials, products, or methods of construction. It's a code that establishes requirements for the maintenance of existing buildings.
So if we could get a copy of that for later, well, no, we get someone to make a copy for everyone, please. That way, we'll make sense. Yes, Bobby? Yes, Bobby?
I might have a need of questions. This isn't new. Essentially, prior to 2001, there were no uniform building codes in Texas at all. So really, it was the builders and the lobby that represents them that, that requested that the legislature begin the process of adopting uniform standards so that builders who built throughout Texas had a set of standards that they could rely on. Because otherwise, what you find happening is if you build in more than one community, you would have various, you could go from one community that would have strict standards, the next community would have zero standards. So historically, what's happening here is this is not new. In fact, the legislature imposed the IRC on Texas in 2001. They imposed the IBC on Texas in 2005. The IECC was actually adopted as a strip-wide code in 2001. So what the legislature did is it said, "In response to your request by the builders, we want new forms throughout the state." But they also allowed signage to do over time. If you can exempt yourself from most of the requirements that don't pertain to your community or that you don't have the resources to enforce. Essentially, what the legislature said was, "We're going to adopt these codes, and they've been in existence for years and years and years. We're going to essentially make you, uh, if you choose to adopt a code, this is your code. You can adopt any other, uh, but you can pick and choose which portions of the code you want to enforce." Some cities are very specific as to what they exempt. Other cities will adopt the code and decide as you move forward what isn't working for your community. But these codes have been adopted by the legislature for you in every single technical city, but they've allowed you to, uh, to amend and exempt yourself from certain provisions. It was certainly accepted, for example, the plumbing code that was adopted. Uh, that requires any city of over 5,000, you must adopt the plumbing code, the natural plumbing code. You must have a licensed plumbing inspector if your population reaches a certain pressure. So it's not new. Uh, all Texas cities have to adopt the same codes. But based on the size of the community and the resources available, maybe you can amend the codes or exempt yourself from wholesale provisions if you choose to do so. Now, what they were talking about in the 1992 code of ordinances is that you had, the last time you amended your code ordinances was in '92. That's the last time anybody took a look at what you have in the books. So you fast forward until last year, you've got that real pretty book. But what that pretty book has is really old ordinances. So the next step really is to go through that great-looking code of ordinances with time and determine what ordinances need to be updated. What my cities typically do is they adopt the code as amended, and we suggested that with this ordinance. So that you're not having to constantly come back and amend your code of ordinances. You adopt the code, like, you're adopting the 2018 versions, the most current version, but the ordinance language says "as amended." So as they are amended in the future, they are automatically amended with your code of ordinances, without you having to take further action. So to answer Mr. Johnson's question, it's what every city is required to adopt if they do adopt the code, but the legislature has done it for you. They just didn't give you any money to enforce it or to implement it. Uh, but they did choose the code that you must adopt, as Teague mentioned earlier.
What about the older buildings that are not going to, I mean, they're probably going to be out of compliance.
That's all, it's going to be a local issue. Basically, you've got the codes, you've got the standards, you can choose what to enforce based on what works for your community, but the standards are there. The enforcement is going to be yours.
But just like anyplace else, if they came in, let's say, for instance, picked the motel here on Main Street double hotel. If they want to come in and do a complete renovation on that, then those codes are going to apply to them. They're going to have to meet these codes. Yeah, but, but, but we're not going to go in there and tell them, "We're shutting you down because you don't meet these codes." It's when they decide to do a renovation, decide to do an upgrade, decide to do an update, that's when this becomes applicable to them.
And you were just to add to what Mr. Jackson said. If you, if you remember, we had just approved going for a planning grant. One of the requirements is that the city, it would add points to us, it would make us more favorable to get a grant if we have either updated our code, the one that is 1992, amended it, which is one of the things we're doing, or this code that we're adopting. There has to be something we've done code-wise, it would be most likely.
This is, this is a stepping stone, this is not a final, final place.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I was asking, is we're going to have a way to customize it.
And, and like I said again, I'll reiterate that this is thousands of pages of stuff. That's why we didn't print it, put it in your packet or print it out for you, because most of it is, it'd be, I mean, for all the kids, you know, if you don't do that for a living, it's over your head anyway, so. But he does have, we printed out there, we have a copy available here in City Hall. Somebody wants to come in and look at it, you know, we'll have them all printed out, make somebody look at it. And we'll put it on the website too. It'll be on the website too.
Now, for the discussion, we need to entertain a motion to address ordinance number 2019-0202.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2019-0202, adopting the additions...
the additions of those four codes as amended.
Second?
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to item D, discussion and possible action to adopt resolution number 2019-02-05 of the City of Pierceville, Texas declaring a surplus to 2011 Elgin Streets Sweeper and authorize the donation of the surplus Streets Sweeper to the Pierceville Independent School District. Item, can I entertain a motion to discuss, please?
Motion to discuss.
All in favor? Yes, sir.
Madam Council, a few of us were at the county commission meeting last week to hear the discussion with the sheriff and what was going on with the jail. And during that discussion, uh, we heard about the county having an old streets sweeper that the school was trying to purchase, um, and that they were, they had come up with a price for this thing somehow. Um, so I came back and called the school and talked to them about what they were trying to do. Those parking lots at the school are, were built, city and county built those together. I mean, the school didn't build those, we've all, we've all pitched in to build those things. Um, and they're trying to figure out a way to maintain them where they last owner, um, which, which cleaning them, doing whatever, they've got the bad mouth, they're practicing on those, all those parking lots, they're just trying to figure out a way to maintain them. Um, when we bought our new streets sweeper, the old one, we, we talked to the company about trying to trade it in, but you guys remember when Casey was here, he said, well, good luck with that because they're gonna, the old streets sweeper you can't sell, nobody wants it. The one that we have basically, that's not the purpose of it, it wasn't a streets sweeper, it was a parking lot sweeper, that's what it was supposed to be. Um, kind of rubbed me wrong with the county was trying to charge the school for an old piece of equipment that probably was gonna take a bunch of maintenance not to work with anyway. Um, so we have, um, the Elgin, uh, which we won't put this doing, we won't be using it. Um, if there is a need for us to use it, uh, and we don't make it to the school, I'm sure we don't work, I don't even pick it up and use it for a day or something if we needed to. Um, but this is gonna be something that would be very helpful to the school and would help with our, I think, with our relationship with the school. Um, so it's just, I mean, with the new one, it's gonna settle in there and fall apart, just like other rooms that settle in that yard, so I've put it to use and give it to the school, let them use it.
Yes, sir.
Could we maybe talk to them about swapping services for the bucket?
They let us use that bucket truck anytime we want. They're very good about that. And that came from the stage, we started letting them use the new stage, and so we, as far as the stage and the bucket truck, we get along great. And this will be the same way with this.
But we, the studio still has their own sweeper, right?
Well, they would, yeah, the brand new one that we bought. This is the old, what was it?
Making sure.
And I did speak to Dr. Rodriguez about this, he was very excited that we would consider doing this, so I told him I'd bring it to you tonight.
Madam Mayor, I mean, this is just something I think the councils want to do a long time, is get along with the other government entities. Can we get this public side in the paper? And the keys and, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think the key's a screwdriver.
A hot wire together. It's hot wired together.
Well, we can get a picture, we'll make it look different.
I think we need to make sure that we mentioned we do have the necessary sweeper machines to do the jobs, because...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that can really be an industry.
That can be.
This is the 2011 streets we were doing, not the 2018s?
Yes, yes, make sure.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Go, go ahead.
I move a Q resolution number 2019-0205.
Second?
Second by Councilwoman Edin Ambus. All righty, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Awesome. Item E, discussion and consider or approve the Freo Pioneer Jail Museum request for financial assistance for 2019 Pioneer Day festivities from the Hot Tax Fund. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please. Motion to discuss.
Second?
All in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor Council, last week, I received a request from Ms. Gash to be on the next agenda to talk to you about this. Um, so we put it on the agenda for this because they're asking for the funds for, um, sometime here pretty quick.
Yeah, March of 23rd.
Yeah, March of 23rd, so I'll let them talk to you about their requests.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, in the past, I believe the past two years, we have asked the city, and they co-sponsored the Pioneer Day with us, and it's basically, we're gonna, we're gonna do something a little bit different. This year, we're going on the Friday evening, March 22nd, we're gonna have a Children's Day, and we're gonna have different booths for children to come and play, or do activities, and have children's activities on that Friday. And then Saturday, we have the Pioneer Day, and we have several, we have some singers, musicians, singers, and things like that. So, uh, in the past, I believe you all have helped us by paying for the singers and some other, uh, special people that we have coming, and it was around $3,000. So, we're asking if y'all would do that, help us again this year, that would be good.
Questions? Yes, sir.
Um, I know last year, I know the city helped, there was no advertising from the city, sponsored by the City of Pierceville. I didn't see anything in there, so I was kind of upset about that.
Right, and we had, we had said, they had said, they were gonna send over a banner, and the banner never showed up last year, so I don't know. Uh, yeah, the first year, uh, we called them at the last minute, and I believe that they did bring the banner over. Last year, we talked to them, and the banner came over, started on. I mean, we're, we're fine with the banner, we don't have a problem with that, it's just it didn't, it didn't arrive. So, you don't know.
And we could certainly, with our advertising, we certainly can...
Yeah.
Can mention that the city's sponsoring part of the events.
That would be beneficial.
Right, you might wanna send it earlier because last minute, people get busy and everything, so I'm not sure.
I have a question. Did this make the Hot Tax Fund guidelines?
So, the new guidelines that you guys have adopted does not, um, because the request wasn't put in ninety days in advance. The new guidelines you adopted, that application was due ninety days in advance, um, and it puts all that advertising responsibility on the group beginning and not on the city to provide, to provide a banner or anything, or anything else. It's all advertising, the city's supposed to be recognized for that, or supposed to be listed in the advertising. Um, there's also, but there's also provision in the guidelines, I mean, you guys, you guys can do whatever you want to under the guidelines. Uh, in this first year, you know, I mean, the new guidelines, you know, I mean, the groups that have asked before, uh, we have, well, two or three groups that have asked, one of the groups did come in after that meeting and ask for their application, and we had their, we had their application in time, um, because they didn't keep, they didn't, I mean, they read in the newspaper and came in and asked for it, and we, we have got those now, should we be doing that one now? Um, I think there's still some, you know, there's some specific things that you guys established in the guidelines that I think have to be answered, that's a percentage of the budget, um, so that stuff, I think, those questions have to be answered, because you guys specifically said no more than 50% of the budget could be requested, um, and if there's a profit from it, there's a lot of problems being due. So, I, you know, you guys, if you guys want to approve it, we saw it in the meeting in March, um, but it's right before their event, I mean, I think our, our March meeting is like March 11th. Uh, you know, it's right, let me take here real quick, but I think that March meeting is March the 12th, and their event's on the 23rd?
23rd, well, 22nd and 23rd.
So, that's ten days before. Well, I think without the application, we could, you know, we could wait, you could wait the ninety-day requirement, and we could look at the application, you guys could do with that. Um, that's up to you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Has it been advertised about this to, to, to the people who are requesting?
Well, I mean, it's in the newspaper, you know, that's one of the things here, once we do something, if people don't read the newspaper, you know, how does, how does everybody find, we don't have radio, we don't have TV, we don't have, you know, it's hard to get it.
It's just to avoid this, you know?
Yeah, I agree with that.
And you probably weren't aware of the 99...
I know, that's all your expression on your face.
Yeah, three months, I think, uh, yeah, we weren't aware of that.
Okay.
So, you know, and we are, it is one of the, one of the things that we do have in Freo County to promote the heritage of Freo County and, and the, the old jail museum, which is one of our historical, historic things, and, and so, this is one of the ways that we try to keep it up, and so, just to just add another, this is the 21st year of the Pioneer Day.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Does the county help you with this in any way?
They do not. They, uh, we, they waive the fee that we, you know, in the park, for the park, but we're not using the park this year. Uh, but they do, well, they do end that they supply the electricity, they, they do have up to on the building itself, they do help us, uh, because it is actually their building, not really our building, and, uh, they also maintain the grass and cut it, and they do those things for us. But as far as monetary, uh, for the event, they do not, yeah, for the event, they don't.
So, I have a question. Um, so what, what is the percentage of, of your budget?
For the budget for last year?
What's the total budget?
Well, what's the total budget?
For the event, it was $12,000 last year, and our profit was $2,000. So, it's not a big moneymaker at all. It's, it's really not intended to be... No, it's not, it's more of the, uh, to celebrate the history of Freo County, but it's not, it is definitely not a moneymaker. We probably lose money pretty much every year.
Yes, sir.
So, what I, my thought, you guys could approve with additions, I mean, kind of like you did the, the grant for the facade, you know, you could say that, you know, that the 4,000 is approved contingent on them giving us a budget that shows that it's, you know, that it's not more than half of the budget, or whatever else you want to put on there, and that way, we're not waiting until the 12th for them to answer, the sooner they give us information, the sooner we can give them the answer. That's a, that's a thought, if that's what you guys want to do.
Yeah, if you let us know what type of information specifically you need, we can get that for you, based on last year's, you know, then pretty much everything.
Is it, is, a question, is it possible, just, uh, since it's a museum that they're trying to keep up with, uh, for us to give a yearly donation to the museum and...
The Hot Tax Fund, you can do that, especially for maintenance.
Let, let, let them work with the money however they need to work with it.
Since it is a, a museum...
Historic, written.
For the Hot Tax.
Yeah, so we don't receive any Hot Tax money anymore, and so, we used to, we used to get Hot Tax money, but we don't anymore.
So, if you gave a donation to the museum, we can approve that, it's nice, because that's not what's on the agenda, but, um, that would exempt it from the guidelines, because that's a whole different deal, I mean, that, that's, that's, for the first part of the guidelines, all that other stuff, the ninety days, or whatever, that's not there, um, you know, so you could not approve the request.
Well, did it prove donation, I'm looking at, the agenda it says request for financial assistance.
So, you probably could, you could do it that way it said.
Say that again, Bobby?
The agenda item says it's a request for financial, financial assistance for the Pioneer Day festivities.
Right, for finding, but it is for the festivities.
Yeah, to maintain the buildings for our festivities. But that's what you guys wanted to do.
I still believe there should be some kind of advertising, promoting the city.
Well, the donation, that way, you can do that too.
I'm sure, yeah, like y'all, uh, we can certainly, are you saying include the city that they're, that's sponsored by the city? Yeah, I mean, that's not, that's not a problem at all. Uh, we asked y'all for the, uh, the banner, and we did get it the year before, and then last year, I don't know, I don't know what happened, I thought we had called somebody, but it's been there. So, I don't know.
So, so, so something visible, you know?
Sure. Like, like, whatever, how big your banner is, it's a little red, I think it's a big banner, the one that's on before it, that's a little, so, and we are having, we are having a Children's Day and things like that, you know, we want to promote, uh, the year to improve.
I think with the part of Council of the Rails, in the guidelines, it says all advertising. So, if you have an advent paper, it should have the city logo in it, if you have a player, any advertising should have the city logo in that advertising.
Would be some advertising, uh, probably every week from now until then, so we could get your, your logo, and we can certainly put the logo on our...
Awesome.
And you have, I suggested, maybe you approach the county as well?
We, we will, they don't, they don't have Hot Tax like you all do, and I, I'm assuming that, you know, at this point, they do not have, or I'm not, if they're aware of any Hot Tax, I'm not aware of that.
They got a lot of money comes out of the city that they can get.
Yeah. Stop it. All righty, enough for the question, let's address this item, please.
I guess I move that we, uh, approve a donation to the, uh, Pioneer Day, uh, to the, uh, to the county museum?
Mm-hmm.
With a amount of $4,000.
With the stipulations, uh...
As long as you get advertising, save for yourself.
If you give us your logo, we will definitely do that.
Second?
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Just as a side note, uh, a couple of weeks ago, Justin Horn, who was in Canoe, was down, and some good advertising for the area, and we went out to Freo County, and they did some interviews with Dr. Gorham and with Justin Roberts, and they took pictures of the, of the old cemetery, and the river, and all the buildings, or the what's left of the buildings there, and it will run in the morning, his story about this, that abandoned city will run in the morning at nine, and then tomorrow afternoon at six, if you're interested in watching.
Awesome, thank you.
What channel was it?
Close to the courthouse and jail, the old jail that is at Freo County, which is very interesting to see what's left of it.
Thank you, ladies.
I have you.
All righty, we move it? Okay, good night, be careful.
Okay, good, we're clear all right. Okay, good, the banner?
The banner.
Yes, I have it. Okay, great. And thank you again.
You're welcome. Okay, we're gonna move on to item F. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution number 2019-02-06 for Pine Hills Estate Two Development. All righty, action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Awesome, all in favor? The motion made.
Madam Council, whoever represents you in the group, someone's gonna let it out.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Michael Fogo, um, on the Hamilton Properties, um, and we are nowhere I can stand, but, um...
Right there is great.
Okay. Um, we are, well, first of all, thank you for, for putting us on the agenda and letting me come here and speak, and, um, this hasn't been kind of a rush process, so I do apologize for that. Um, we are affordable, we are affordable housing developers, builders, investors, and owners, um, with, we operate in a multi-state region, but primarily in Missouri and Texas, um, and myself just in Texas. Um, and a lot of what we do is new construction of affordable housing developments, um, with the strong emphasis of kind of track record, um, and kind of a niche in rural communities, and also for, for senior living. Um, and, but what I'm here to talk about today, um, is a little bit different, although still within a wheelhouse, and that's the rehabilitation of an existing senior property in that Pierceville Manor here, which is a 36-unit, uh, affordable senior living property that was built in the early 90s. Um, and, and so, and so what, what's kind of going on, or what happened was, there's a portfolio of a couple dozen properties that were, that were owned by someone else, uh, and there was basically kind of a, a GP who was a bad actor, and was not maintaining the properties properly, um, and was actually embezzling funds on some of them, um, and basically not performing the maintenance and a number of things that they should have been doing with a property, whether it was affordable and had certain USDA tax credit funds, or whether it was non-affordable. Uh, but in any, in any event, the, the LP removed, removed that actor, um, and then came to us and asked, you know, and the LP is an investor, not a, not an operator, or a rehab, or a builder. Um, and so they came to us and said, would you, could, or would you purchasing these properties and kind of get them, you know, back up to operate how they should be? Um, and so we evaluated, uh, a couple dozen of them and determined that four of them, um, one of them here and one in Divine, would be eligible for, for a sale, um, and more importantly, would be eligible for tax credit funding from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And, and what that, what that would provide is, there's a process, a competitive process by which property owners and developers can apply to the state for tax credit funding. Um, and when they take that funding, or when we take that funding, you take on a number of restrictions that, uh, the units will be affordable, and, um, you won't charge a rent that's more than 30% of someone's income, um, and that no one in the unit can make more than 6% of their immediate income. In, in this case, the... In, in this case, the property is already set up in an affordable manner, so it already has a number of restrictions. And what's interesting is, because it already has all those restrictions, it's actually constricted or restricted from kind of being rehabilitated in a traditional sense, because if this, if it was a non-affordable property, someone could come in and buy it, and put some money into it, you know, to fix it up, and, yeah, maybe have to raise the rents a little bit, you know, and not necessarily drastically, but it'll provide a revenue source to, to fund it. In this case, it has USDA financing, you know, for like a 50-year period starting in 1992, so the options are limited. But the Pierceall property is, is fortunate, and it's kind of a draw of luck that this year, with, with how the point system works and applying to the funding and everything, that it would be eligible, and we think very competitive for those tax credits. And so the reason I'm here today is, in order to submit that application to the state, we, we would need two things from the city. One is a resolution of support, which, which I have language here in case y'all don't have, that would be passed by council that basically says, we're, we're aware of this and we can support it. And the intent of that is, is generally designed for if someone's coming in and doing a new construction project, so that, that the city and everyone is aware of, of a new development going in. In this case, carrying it over to the rehab of existing property. And so what we do is, we would get funding, and it would provide about 70% of the cost, and we would put in the other 30%. And we would spend 35 to 50, and I really think it'll be 50, but I always let the shoe low, $50,000 per unit, totally doing new heating and ventilation, electric, plumbing, roofs, floors, community amenities, and, you know, do a very significant rehabilitation of the property, and address a lot of deferred maintenance that, that's occurred over the years. And with that, no, you know, no one would be displaced, no one would be, no one would be kicked out, there could be temporary displacement, and with that, we would and were required to, by HUD, to do what's called universal relocation assistance. And so if anyone does need to move, we would pay for the moving, both directions. And ideally, what, what we'll do is, we'll allow for a natural vacancy, and so, and actually, a few of the units are vacant because the owner hasn't put the money into making them available again. But what, the, the best way to go about it, and how we would seek to go about it, is let four to six units, or one, one of the buildings become vacant, go in, rehab that building, and then help tenants move into that building, just go building by building, and that way it minimizes the impact. But so, but so long-term, you know, there would be, there would be an increase to the quality of the housing, of the housing stock that's provided to seniors, and it would remain affordable, and we'd actually be kind of incurring ourselves as the new owner and the property itself with an additional restriction as far as keeping it affordable and not flipping it to, to market rate or something. And so going back, I said that the, the ask from the city is two things. The first is the resolution of support, the second is a symbolic letter of funding, and then out of $250. And, and that $250, you know, I think, not I think, would, would be more than offset by the building permit fees that, that we would undergo for about a $1.5 million renovation. But, but the point is that it's symbolic, and that way, you know, the council has to approve it. But it could come in the form of, of a fee waiver or a fee reduction. And, and that's really it from, from the city. Of course, we would go through the normal permit process for building. And there's, it's, the funding involves tax credits, but there's no tax of maintenance the property is today and will be in the future on, on the tax rolls, you know, paying, paying on city, county, and, and school taxes.
So you pay more taxes as you approve?
The taxes, the taxes won't go up that much because the rents, the rents aren't really gonna go up, or, what's wrong with property taxes? The, the property tax won't go up that much because we're not raising the grants that much. And so, there's two, there's two ways that, well, there's multiple ways that the county can assess property, or assess value. And one is the, the cost, the other is via income approach. And so, affordable properties, if, if the market rent would be $800, and our rent, you know, we're charging $450, it's really taxed on the $450, as it is today, so nothing's going down. So I'm, I'm saying that because I don't want to create the impression that we are going to, you know, be paying much more property taxes in the future when, when we're not as, to be.
Who's got their hand up?
But we will, we will pay sales tax on, on building materials and a bunch of stuff like that, too.
Yes.
Thank you, President, I have a question. So, the tax credits there are gonna come from increased tax value, but if the increased tax value doesn't go up, how do you get your, how do you get reimbursed for your funding?
So, so, no, the, the, the tax credit funding is, is totally independent and removed from anything locally. So there was a, there was a rewrite of the 1986 federal tax code, which provided these, these housing tax credits, which is actually income tax reduction for corporations. So, we could take the tax credits, which is paid out over a 10-year period, and use it to offset our federal income tax. We, we don't do that, what, what we actually end up doing is, we sell them to a bank or larger corporation, they give us the net present value of that today, so we can use, you know, all the money today for the new build, or in this case, the rehabilitation.
I mean, it, my, my, it really doesn't make money, submarket rents.
Right, as it is today.
But it's gonna stay that way because you've got, you're gonna stay at affordable rents by doing this, because you're gonna, you're gonna maintain a restriction on the property moving to a...
Well, so it's, it's already gonna stay that because it has a 45 or 50... There will be some, there will be some possible, there will be some addition. However, it's got a 45 to 50-year restriction from 1992, and so we're only halfway through that, and the property already needs more investment. And so, any, anything we take on will be additional, but it'll also be concurrent.
And, and you're gonna be the owner, Pine Estates are gonna purchase this from the selling partnership.
Yeah, yes, sir, so we, we have it under contract right now to, to purchase it.
Did you have a question?
One question, is there any possibilities of you rebuilding, like, an assisted living for, for elderly? In, in, in this general area?
There is, but I don't, I don't want to over commit, you know, or, or act like I'm promising, promising them that I'm not. It would be totally separate, anything like that would be totally separate from this. And so I, so, the answer is, is possible, but not, not related to this.
Yes, good.
What's the purpose of the symbolic $250? I failed to see where it comes to play.
You know, I, I don't, I don't know exactly where the purpose is, but primarily, it's so that we have this conversation that, that we're having right, that we're having right now. And it allows, it provides an opportunity for us, or myself, to discuss it with, with council. And, and generally, it's, it's more of a potential issue or kind of talking point when, when someone's doing a ground up, new construction, it's a little bit different for rehab, but the, the rules and regulations are still the same.
That's what I'm confused about, where does that come from?
Oh, okay, oh, sorry, so, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs is a state agency that administers...
Right.
And doles out the tax credits. It's their requirement in order to apply for the tax credits, that you have the symbolic one.
You still have to apply for the tax credit, though, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
In the attached paperwork, it says that you get certain points for certain, certain things in order to get that, that loan, is that not correct? Is that one of the reasons you're coming here today, because you want to get those extra points in order to get that loan, is that not correct?
Yes, yes, no, that's generally correct, and, yes.
There's your symbolic.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
So, okay, so let's, let's, let's make this, there's a business component to this, that it is what it is, I mean, they would be doing this if there wasn't some profits to be, some kind of profits to be made someplace, although that wouldn't be a business for free, but...
Correct.
End of the day, this costs the city nothing but a $250 waiver in permit fees.
Right.
The property gets about a million dollar renovation.
Pardon me, I'm 1.5.
1.5 million dollar renovation. We have 36 units there now that are not, all 36 aren't supporting seniors, when you guys are done, all 36 will be supporting low-income seniors.
Yes, sir.
For a $250 waiver, I don't think, and for those of you that, for those of you that went to Austin for the legislative day, this is what Tracy Keen was asking about, this is that thing he was asking about that day. If we have had a chance to...
State representative.
So, this is...
It's good, I mean, I work around it, so I'm, I'm familiar with it, it's, it's real good.
Senator, you guys approve it?
All righty.
All right. We approve resolution number 2019-02-06. For Pine Hills Estates Development.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, item six, in second session, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, chapter 551, point 071, discussion regarding the closure of the Frio Jail. So entertain a motion to go into second session?
Motion to go to session. Second.
All in favor? The time is? 8:22. Intain a motion to return from a second session?
Motion to return, second.
All in favor? Time is 8:53. All righty, open session, discussion of possible action regarding the closure of Frio County Jail, action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion discussed.
Second.
All in favor? We need to...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that regarding the closure of the Frio County Jail, that we contact the city of Dilly and ask for a joint meeting, and also invite local DPS and gay wardens if they want to come, as soon as possible.
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Six, seven, whatever time's convenient with them, the wire is convenient for them.
Yes, sir, and I will be limited to that, if they can, as soon as possible.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but you said Dilly, DPS...
Dilly and the DPS.
Gay wardens.
Gay wardens for that, for this area.
What about the DA?
Yes, sir.
DA.
Motion on the table, may I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All righty, item eight, motion to...
And the air makes a motion to adjourn.
Time is 8:55.